That song, but you may not know the county commissioner.
To order the work session meeting for March the 12th, 2019. We're so glad to have all of you here. Nice to have Sheriff Gullidge with us and City Councilman Jimmy Henson and just everyone for taking part in your county government. We greatly appreciate it and don't take it for granted. Brian, if you'd bring the list forward and if you have your phone on, it'd be a good time to turn that off. Talking to myself here. And we're very honored and pleased always to have our pastors with us. This morning we had Pastor Todd Gaddis of Dallas First Baptist Church. And Todd, thanks so much for being here, bringing us our invitation and leading us in the pledge. Stand if you're able, please.
He's also an author.
Do I, I had some verses I want to read. So are you going to stand up during that too? Or are we gonna, I had a little sermon prepared, a little sermonette.
We'll stand up and, you know.
Okay, I just want, first off, I'm honored to be here. Thank you for the opportunity. And I've been a pastor for almost 30 years now, and I've always tried to be involved in the community. And we appreciate the work you're doing. I know it's not easy work and it's hard to please everybody, isn't it? But it's a major responsibility. And for that reason, we pray for you. The Bible says, first of all, then I urge that in treaties and prayers, petitions, thanksgiving be made on behalf of all men, for kings and all who are in authority, in order that we may lead a tranquil and quiet life in all godliness and dignity. This is good and acceptable in the sight of God and Savior who desires all men to be saved and to come to the knowledge of the truth. So the Bible commands us to pray for those in authority, whether we agree with everything they do or not, whether they're part of their party or whatever. And so we're going to pray for you. And that includes you all and all of our school system, our first responders. And so let's do that now. Father, we thank you for this opportunity to gather. Lord, it's an honor and a privilege to be able to stand here. And I thank you for the opportunity because you're mighty and you're awesome and you're marvelous. None of us would even be standing here, would even be in these positions were it not for you. Lord, I thank you and praise you for these men and women who serve, Lord, for our school system. I pray for Dr. O Todd and all of those that serve, Lord, for our first responders, for our cities and counties and for our state. Lord, we know we're in a great county. We know we're in a great state. We're in a great part of the country. And we want it to stay that way. We want it to be a place where people can raise their families and people can feel safe and feel like there's an opportunity for growth and prosperity. And Lord, we know there's always risks and dangers. We pray that our state would stay strong, that our county would stay strong. We know there are people moving in, Lord. It's growing. And we can't stop it, Father, because this is a place where people, it's affordable, it's where they want to move. I pray wise decisions are made. I pray wisdom prevails. I pray there's unity among this body. I pray for each person behind that wall, Lord. I pray that they would consult you before voting yea or nay. And Lord, it's just, it's an ominous task, a mighty task to do this. And I pray that you would, by the Holy Spirit, guide them. And I pray for our country as well. Lord, it's just, these are difficult times, but we know that you're on the throne and you're in charge. The guide is here, Lord. My people look to Paulding County and say, there's a bright spot in this world, a place where people love God and country and their families and their responsible citizens. So that's what we desire and pray. In the precious name of Jesus, amen. Let's say our pledge to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you so much, Pastor Gaddis. The February 26th, 2019 work session minutes and the February 26th, 2019 board meeting minutes are available for review. Under our positively Paulding segment this morning, we got a little short clip on the Northwest Georgia Regional Commission's Mobile Career Center that visited us earlier this week.
Hi, I'm Lindia Moore, and I am the one-stop coordinator for Northwest Georgia Region. We work with employers to help them find the best applicants for their positions. Today we're here in Paulding County with the Mobile Career Center with a recruitment event for Atlanta Risk Management.
I'm Chase Holden.
And I'm Shane Holden. We're with the Northwest Georgia Regional Commission.
The Northwest Georgia Regional Commission covers 15 counties and 49 cities from Dade over to Fannin and down to Harrellson. We're proud to be here in Paulding County today.
They didn't really let you drive that, did they, Dave?
No.
This is making sure.
We would like to announce a town hall meeting that will occur on March the 28th at 7:00 PM at night at Stars and Strikes location on Dallas Marietta Highway. Loved to have you or anybody listening to attend that. And we'll have some of the staff and probably most of the commissioners. Miscellaneous topics at that one. Under invited guests, we have none. Under bid awards, we have an award for the 2019 asphalt project contract number one to the low bidder, C.W. Matthews, in the amount of $4,270,188.79. Ms. Pollard and Mr. Jones.
Good morning.
Morning.
On February 28th, we received four bids for, to include the milling, patching, leveling, and plant mix resurfacing on five county roads. And those bids ranged from 4.2 million to 4.7 million. And we are recommending award to C.W. Matthews in the low bid amount of $4,270,188.79.
Good morning.
Good morning.
You know, each year, the county lets out a through-road asphalt contract. You know, the work consists of deep patching, leveling, surface course on 13.29 miles. On this particular contract, C.W. Matthews was the low bidder. We've used them in the past with very good results. They do excellent work on asphalt resurfacing. The completion date for this contract would be September 30th, 2019, if approved. In previous years, we'd bid our asphalt contract out later during the summer months where they would probably get started in July and August. And then we always had a completion date of December. So we were really kind of up against a higher deadline. So this year, we decided to let it out earlier to try to give more seasonable months to do the asphalt resurfacing. So hopefully, this will work out much better and give us a better product. So, and also, I can answer any questions, hopefully, if asked.
Let's see, this list of roads, George, is, let's see, a couple post one there. Is that one and four primarily?
Yes, it is.
Okay.
Again, we, we pick the roads based on rating. We try to do the worst first. So, and that's, those are the roads that came up as needing the resurfacing the most.
No, I've heard, I've heard some things on a couple of those roads. So that'll be good.
George, it looked like you had four good bids. However, you mentioned that they were 10% over what your estimate had been. Is it just because there's so much competition out there?
Yeah. And again, our, you know, this is an estimate. We take G-dot bid prices and try to see how they compare to these bids. The, on this particular project, the big difference between our bid estimate and the low bid was traffic control. That was the one thing that stood out. Other than that, there was some highs and lows with the various bid items. But like I said, we feel, we feel very comfortable with this bid.
Anyone else?
Thanks, sir.
Thank you.
We have no reports from committees and departments this morning, and no one did sign up for the public participation on agenda items. The consent agenda, there are two. And, if I can get the pages apart here. Number one is to approve the renewal of the memorandum of understanding between Paulding County and the Board of Regents of the University System of Georgia. On behalf of the University of Georgia Cooperative Extension, no additional support is required. Ms. Sheffield here. Do you want to say anything?
It's just a renewal of our, our contract, our memorandum of understanding that we have with the university. It's a shared, that's why we're called Cooperative Extension, because we're cooperatively funded by counties and by the state. And it, there's no changes to this year's contract.
Thank you, Mayor Carroll. Number two is to declare the attached list of items as surplus and approve their disposal through action or trade. I've got the list here. Attorney Phillips has figured out a way where I don't have to read all the numbers and letters. So thank you, Jason.
That song, but you may not know the county commissioner. To order the work session meeting for March the 12th, 2019. We're so glad to have all of you here. Nice to have Sheriff Gullidge with us and City Councilman Jimmy Henson and just everyone for taking part in your county government. We greatly appreciate it and don't take it for granted. Brian, if you'd bring the list forward and if you have your phone on, it'd be a good time to turn that off. Talking to myself here. And we're very honored and pleased always to have our pastors with us. This morning we had Pastor Todd Gattis of Dallas First Baptist Church. And Todd, thanks so much for being here, bringing us our invitation and leading us in the pledge. Stand if you're able, please.
He's also an author.
Do I, I had some verses I want to read. So are you going to stand up during that too? Or are we gonna, I had a little sermon prepared, a little sermonette.
We'll stand up and, you know.
Okay, I just want, first off, I'm honored to be here. Thank you for the opportunity. And I've been a pastor for almost 30 years now, and I've always tried to be involved in the community. And we appreciate the work you're doing. I know it's not easy work, and it's hard to please everybody, isn't it? But it's a major responsibility. And for that reason, we pray for you. The Bible says, first of all, then I urge, that in treaties and prayers, petitions, thanksgiving be made on behalf of all men, for kings and all who are in authority, in order that we may lead a tranquil and quiet life in all godliness and dignity. This is good and acceptable in the sight of God and Savior, who desires all men to be saved and to come to the knowledge of the truth. So the Bible commands us to pray for those in authority, whether we agree with everything they do or not, whether they're part of their party or whatever. And so we're going to pray for you. And that includes you all and all of our school system, our first responders. And so let's do that now. Father, we thank you for this opportunity to gather. It is an honor and a privilege to be able to stand here, and I thank you for the opportunity, because you're mighty and you're awesome and you're marvelous. None of us would even be, standing here would even be in these positions were it not for you. Lord, I thank you and praise you for these men and women who serve. Lord, for our school system, I pray for Dr. O Todd and all of those that serve. Lord, for our first responders, for our cities and counties and for our state. Lord, we know we're in a great county. We know we're in a great state. We're in a great part of the country, and we want it to stay that way. We want it to be a place where people can raise their families and people can feel safe and feel like there's an opportunity for growth and prosperity. And Lord, we know there's always risks and dangers. We pray that our state would stay strong, that our county would stay strong. We know there are people moving in, Lord. It's growing. And we can't stop it, Father, because this is a place where people, it's affordable, it's where they want to move. I pray wise decisions are made. I pray wisdom prevails. I pray there's unity among this body. I pray for each person behind that wall, Lord. I pray that they would consult you before voting yea or nay. And, Lord, it's just, it's an ominous task, a mighty task, to do this. And I pray that you would, by the Holy Spirit, guide them. And I pray for our country as well. Lord, it's just, these are difficult times, but we know that you are on the throne and you're in charge. The guide is here, Lord. My people look to Paulding County and say, there's a bright spot in this world, a place where people love God and country and their families and they're responsible citizens. So that's what we desire and pray, in the precious name of Jesus. Amen. Let's say our pledge to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you so much, Pastor Gattis. The February 26th, 2019 work session minutes and the February 26th, 2019 board meeting minutes are available for review. Under our positively appalling segment this morning, we get a little short clip on the Northwest Georgia Regional Commission's Mobile Career Center that visited us earlier this week.
Hi, I'm Lindia Moore, and I am the one-stop coordinator for Northwest Georgia Region. We work with employers to help them find the best applicants for their positions. Today we're here in Paulding County with the Mobile Career Center with a recruitment event for Atlanta Risk Management.
I'm Chase Holden.
And I'm Shane Holden. We're with the Northwest Georgia Regional Commission.
The Northwest Georgia Regional Commission covers 15 counties and 49 cities, from Dade over to Fannin and down to Harrelson. We're proud to be here in Paulding County today.
They didn't really let you drive that, did they, Dave?
No.
Just making sure. We would like to announce a town hall meeting that will occur on March the 28th at 7:00 PM at night at Stars and Strikes location on Dallas Marietta Highway. Love to have you or anybody listening to attend that. And we'll have some of the staff and probably most of the commissioners. Miscellaneous topics at that one. Under invited guests, we have none. Under bid awards, we have an award for the 2019 asphalt project contract, number one, to the low bidder, C.W. Matthews, in the amount of $4,270,188.79. Ms. Pollard and Mr. Jones.
Good morning.
Morning.
On February 28th, we received four bids to include the milling, patching, leveling, and plant mix resurfacing on five county roads. And those bids ranged from 4.2 million to 4.7 million. And we are recommending award to C.W. Matthews in the low bid amount of $4,270,188.79.
Good morning.
Good morning.
You know, each year, the county lets out a through-road asphalt contract. You know, the work consists of deep patching, leveling, surface course on 13.29 miles. On this particular contract, C.W. Matthews was the low bidder. We've used them in the past with very good results. They do excellent work on asphalt resurfacing. The completion date for this contract would be September 30th, 2019, if approved. In previous years, we'd bid our asphalt contract out later during the summer months, where they would probably get started in July and August. And then we always had a completion date of December. So we were really kind of up against a higher deadline. So this year, we decided to let it out earlier to try to give more seasonable months to do the asphalt resurfacing. So hopefully, this will work out much better and give us a better product. So, and also, I can answer any questions, hopefully, if asked.
Let's see this list of roads. George is, let's see, a couple post one there. Is that one and four primarily?
Yes, it is.
Okay.
Again, we pick the roads based on rating. We try to do the worst first. And that's, those are the roads that came up as needing the resurfacing the most.
No, I've heard, I've heard some things on a couple of those roads, so that'll be good.
George, it looked like you had four good bids. However, you mentioned that they were 10% over what your estimate had been. Is that just because there's so much competition out there?
Yeah. And again, our, you know, this is an estimate. We take GDOT bid prices and try to see how they compare to these bids. Though, on this particular project, the big difference between our bid estimate and the low bid was traffic control. That was the one thing that stood out. Other than that, there was some highs and lows with the various bid items. But like I said, we feel, we feel very comfortable with this bid.
Anyone else? Thanks, sir.
Thank you.
We have no reports from committees and departments this morning, and no one did sign up for the public participation on agenda items. The consent agenda, there are two. And, if I can get the pages apart here. Number one is to approve the renewal of the memorandum of understanding between Paulding County and the Board of Regents of the University System of Georgia. On behalf of the University of Georgia Cooperative Extension, no additional support is required. Ms. Sheffield here. Do you want to say anything?
It's just a renewal of our, our contract, our memorandum of understanding that we have with the university. It's a shared, that's why we're called Cooperative Extension, because we're cooperatively funded by counties and by the state. And it, there's no changes to this year's contract.
Thank you, Mayor Carroll. Number two is to declare the attached list of items as surplus and approve their disposal through action or trade. I've got the list here. Attorney Phillips has figured out a way where I don't have to read all the numbers and letters. So thank you, Jason. We have no old business. Under new business, discuss action to approve the design services agreement with Crofton Associates for Fire Station Number 12 and Post 4, in the approximate amount of $54,600 to be funded by SPOST funding. We've got Mr. Bruce Cole and Chief Pelfrey here, available for questions.
Gentlemen, looks like Fire Station 12 maybe has landed. It's been at four different locations. We've, it was in combination once with the EOC and 911 Center, then it was separated. It's been at, you know, four different sites I've worked on, looked at. Eventually, the best location we found was Wayside Lane. And our architect's been with us. It was actually led as a design build years ago, and then that contract pulled back. But anyway, we are ready to go forward with it now. We've got the site, we've got the civil, we've had septic tank, or soil testing for septic. We're ready to go, and it's going to be located at the intersection of Wayside Lane and Spring. And Joey's going to tell you about how it fits into his service area.
Good morning.
Morning.
The new fire station, we've been looking at this for a while. We've had some areas in the county that are over the five miles from residents when they have the water system available to get their ISO ratings down lower. This was a crucial area for us, out in the McPherson Road, Mount Olivet area. We had a lot of homes out there that were over the five miles. This, this territory that GIS cut out for us is going to be taking some territory from Station 1, Station 7, and parts of Station 4. And there'll be about 1,670 homes, addresses within this territory. One of the biggest advantages to having this station, of course, like I mentioned, ISO rating, but the biggest one is the response times. We have a lot of long response times out in those areas. When you've got Dallas responding to one side and Yorkville out there, it takes a lot of time. And then when you got to have backup trucks, it takes even longer. This will cut those response times in a lot of times in half. One of the other advantages is being able to back up the west side of Dallas for Station 1 here, and also back up Station 7, because when they get calls and you have to have backup trucks, it takes a long time for that backup. And we all know those minutes are crucial when it comes to medical calls with CPR in progress, or if it comes to house fires. So we're excited about having this. We looked hard for a piece of land that will work, and we believe we got a great place that's right in the center where we need it. Like I said, it does help with ISO rating. We got some of those homes out there. It probably receive a rating of about a 10, which is the worst you can get because they're over the five miles. This will cut it down to three, because that's what, what we are right now, is protection class of three. One of the other biggest advantages is Pool Elementary is right up the street. Station 7 was the closest station to Pool Elementary, and that was approximately five miles to that school. So that's going to help a lot too, as far as the safety of the children and teachers there. And I'd be glad to answer any questions.
We are pleased to have Mr. Jim Croft of Crofton Associates here today. So thank you for being here, Mr. Croft.
I do have one question for you, Joey. As far, taking the rating from a 10 to a 3, does that depend whether or not they have county water or fire hydrant close to their house, or does it automatically go from 10 to 3?
Well, it does. It's, you got to be within five miles of a fire station, and also 1,000 feet within a hydrant, or an approved water source. And when I say an approved water source, if, if a homeowner puts a dry hydrant in, in a lake with an engineer drawing, it's approved to be used. We would test that hydrant every year to ensure that it has the water flow we need and make sure it's operational. And your insurance company should give you credit for that.
Yeah, I just wanted to make sure, you know, somebody watching.
A lot of lakes out there.
Well, that, but I just wanted to make sure somebody, you know, like down where I live at, you know, we don't have a fire hydrant. So, you know, just in case there was questions, if they say, well, he said 10 to 3, and I just, what would it make it go from a 10 to what without a fire hydrant?
That would depend on your insurance company. They have to look at that. I don't know how they rate that. I would not see why you wouldn't get a 3 if you're within that five miles, you have that dry hydrant there.
Yeah, but if you didn't have dry.
If you didn't have it. They have classifications, and they have to look at it. If it's, if you're six miles, they may give you a little credit for that. That depends on the insurance companies. And we would advise all the homeowners out there to do a little shopping around when they're looking at their insurance, because some give a little better deals than others.
Appreciate it.
Great report, gentlemen. Thank you.
Thank you.
New business number two is discuss action to approve the May 1st, 2019 Employee Benefits Plan renewal as presented. And to receive that presentation will be Mr. Brian Acker, our Human Resources Director. Thank you, Brian.
I do want to note that Mr. Pelfrey tried to knock me down back there, so. Good morning to all of you. I appreciate the opportunity to come to you this morning, and particularly with three new commissioners on board this year. Bear with me a little bit as I try to make sure we're all on the same page with what we do with our annual renewal. I come before the board about this time every year in March, typically in anticipation of April open enrollment, because we have a May 1 to April 30th plan year. We're not on a calendar year basis, but May 1 to April 30th. Give you all an opportunity to kind of know where we've been, where we're at, where we're going with our plan. It's no surprise to y'all. Y'all can appreciate it as well, that this is certainly important, not only as a basic recruiting and retention tool, but when you get down to the core of the individual employees, their health, health benefits, medical benefits, near and dear to their heart, mean a great deal to them. I want to thank you all in that vein for continued support of the Employee Benefits Plan. We've had an ongoing position, trying to provide the best benefits we can, comprehensive benefits, reasonable price to the employees, as well as keeping it cost-contained as much as we can, out of respect for we're spending taxpayer money. And I kind of consider that part of my mission and obligation to you, as well as the employees. Also want to thank Gary Jacobs, David Easter, back here in the back from J. Smith Lanier. They are our brokers of record and have helped us navigate through this through the years. Appreciate their support and assistance. Kind of getting to the nitty-gritty of the renewal, we do have on all the ancillary coverages, you're talking about dental coverage, talking about life insurance, disability, all that. We have three-year rates, so we don't have any increase in that area at all. Those are good for another 12 months. Where we do see the rate increases are with the medical. Set your mind at ease, we're a lot better off than we were last year. Last year, we came in at about $1.6 million increase. You can't get around claims. I say that every year. You can't get around the claims. That drives the premium. The medical inflation rate alone for this year from, from Blue Cross is 12.3%. We're not even recognizing that. That's 1.6 million increase. This is part of the relationship that we have through our brokers, is we're presented with an increase. Initially, with the underwriting formula, you're seeing a 17.5% increase. It's not where we're going. It's presented to, Blue Cross to us, it's presented at 12.5% or 1.9 million increase. That's still not where we're at. Thanks to the folks at J. Smith Lanier, thanks to Gary, thanks to David, they go toe-to-toe with these folks. Got an underwriting background. They can tell them where their issues, where their outliers, where they have concerns about how they've calculated it. They definitely did that and took it down to 7.6% or 1.1 million dollar increase. We could take that, but that's not good enough for them. That's where we sat probably about three or four weeks ago. They continued to press them. We're sitting at a 3.2% increase, gross increase. I share that history with you, because this is not something that you take casually. The claims drive this. For every dollar that was spent in premium, we spent about 88 cents on claims. You take out some of the large claims, because you have reinsurance for that, we still sit at about 80% of every dollar goes to claims. We're a good client. We've had our business with Blue Cross for a couple of years. Employees are familiar with it. It's important to maintain that good relationship. They're respectful of that, and they gave us the 3.2% increase. I would certainly, again, point out to you that this is near and dear to the employees. I've continued to be supportive. If you talk to folks that you know who have to deal with this kind of stuff, they'll tell you, double-digit increases are not uncommon. I personally am aware of an employer who faced a 42% increase this year. We are very fortunate in this relationship, and again, respectful of what we had to deal with last year. They brought us in at that rate. Certainly, the challenge before you all is that I'd like to ask of the board, having talked to County Administrator Baker, Ms. Pollard, as well as Chairman Carmichael, we'd like to ask that the board absorb that increase for the employees, accept the renewal without any changes to plan designs or employee share. It's easy enough to save a couple of dollars if you want to. We can certainly modify plan. We can increase deductibles. We can increase co-pays. There are all kinds of things we can do if that's what you want to do. And I want you to be aware of that. This is not something that you just have to accept at face value. That this is what we got to do. We don't have a choice. Our hands are tied. We can modify plans, but there is an impact of that, and I think you can appreciate that as well. As I mentioned initially, that the idea is that we would proceed, if accepted, we'd proceed, set up open enrollment meetings for employees in April. Every year, we meet with employees, and not everybody does this anymore. We meet with employees to educate them on the plan. We are very confident that some of the things we've done with the consumer-driven plan, generally educating employees in terms of the wellness things we've done, that that does in fact affect the plan cost. So we continue to do open enrollment meetings every year. Even if we don't have plan design changes, we still want them to be informed. So we will continue to do that in April, if you approve it, if you approve it, and be glad to answer any questions you may have.
The one question I'll have for you, Brian, is the 3.2% increase, what is the dollar amount that that translates to?
3.2, it is $476,448. Of that, $398,000 is straight premium increase, so approximately 3% of the gross increase is straight premium. And the additional amount is projected HRA claims. We have HRA accounts. So that may or may not come to fruition, but certainly want to take that into account in a estimate.
Thank you.
Appreciate J. Smith Lanier being here, and our Human Resource Director, Brian, has been very grateful to you all, and so we are likewise. You know, last year's Baker Street and I've talked, it's 1.6 million we had to absorb.
Yeah, that number was a lot bigger last year than it. Thank you, Brian.
Thank you.
New business number three is discuss action to approve the Facility Construction and Use Agreement between Paulding County and the Harrelson-Paulding County Drug Task Force Control Board. With each party contributing up to $250,000, Paulding County will own and maintain the facility after construction. Sheriff Gullidge and Mr. Dan Sims are here to present. And Dan, thanks for being here. You too, Sheriff Gullidge.
My pleasure. Thank you all. It's been an honor and a privilege to be the state of Georgia's representative, to supervise narcotics enforcement in Harrelson-Paulding County. It's truly been one of the greatest experiences of my career. I have in hand a use agreement signed unanimously by the Control Board of the Harrelson-Paulding Drug Task Force, and I am prepared to answer any questions that you all might have at this time, if any.
You didn't know it would be that easy, did you?
I did.
Dan, I'll answer any [bleep] and everyone of y'all's got my cell phone number. You know how to find me. Y'all are easy.
I believe Mr. Sims drives all the way from Fort Oglethorpe.
Chickamauga, Georgia.
Chickamauga, yeah. And you're going to continue to do that when we have our location here in the county?
Well, of course, I work at the behest of the director, but, but we'll see what the future has to hold.
We hope so. Of course, I told him, Paulding County has a lot of nice houses for sale. He's welcome to come live here.
Right.
He's a great guy. He's done a, he's done a fantastic job with the task force. We've been blessed with, everybody at the GBI sent us to head this task force up. It's been fantastic for us. And Dan is just exemplary and done a fantastic job for us.
We look forward to having you, and it'll be a lot better than having you down at Harrelson County. So Paulding County's going to get you for a long time.
Can I just, can I just say, I just appreciate Sheriff, the, this is a, this has been a little bit of a partnership between the board and the sheriff and the, and the task force, kind of a triangle partnership there, and looking for space and looking for the right way to do this. And there's been some back and forth, and Scott's been in the midst of that. And we've had a couple of times that we had kind of changed directions and talked about it. And then I appreciate your patience. It comes from your office, and as we're trying to get this done the right way.
This is what happens when everybody works together. It's, it's a win-win for everybody.
Absolutely.
Thank you all for your time.
Thank you.
New business number four is discuss action regarding the Chairman's Club membership in support of the Paulding Chamber of Commerce in the amount of $5,000. The Board of Commissioners, along with the Industrial Building Authority Board and the Chamber of Commerce Board and the Director of the Chamber of Commerce, Ms. Stacy Hamby, is with us today. Thank you for being here, Stacy. And we believe like a three-legged stool or a triangle, that there's strength in, in that number. And we feel like to show full support of our interest in economic development, that this is something that we can do. The, the amount of money is the highest level for participants in the Chamber of Commerce, being members. And so we're going to bring this before the whole board and discuss it if needed in public, and then vote on it this afternoon. So is there any discussion? That's the conclusion of our regular business. We have need to go into executive session for personnel and pending and potential litigation. There is no one who has signed up to speak on non-agenda items that we often move ahead if we need to go into executive session. Don't think it'll be extremely long this morning, but at this time, I'd entertain a motion that we go into executive session for those reasons.
I'll make that motion, Dave.
Commissioner Davis made the motion to go in for personnel and pending and potential litigation. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Kakers. Is there any discussion? All those in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? We stand adjourned for executive session.